Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have the invocation by Minister Rosalind Elder of Divine Faith Ministries International, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, please stand with me.
Good evening. May we go before the Throne of Grace, amen?
Amen.
Eternal God, most gracious and everlasting Father, O God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, in the name of Jesus, we just want to thank you, Father God, for another day's journey, Lord. Father God, you've been so good, you've been so kind, you've been so merciful, and we just come to you, Lord God, with our hearts of thanksgiving, Lord God, giving you thanksgiving for this beautiful, amazing, wonderful day that you blessed us again with, Lord God. For this is the day that you made, O God, and we will rejoice and we will be glad in it, O Father. And Father God, as we come boldly before your Throne of Grace, will we obtain the grace and we can find mercy in our time of need, O Lord God? We need your grace and mercy to permeate this building right now, Lord God. Father God, we usher in your shakina glory, Lord God, your Holy Spirit, Lord God, that would give us the wisdom and everything that we need to make the right decisions, O Father. O Father God, I ask that touch every single leader, Lord God, in the name of Jesus. We thank you for this wonderful leadership in Clayton County, O God. We ask you to bless them, Father, in the name of Jesus, O Lord. Thank you for their sacrifices, O God, their dedication, O God. And Father God, we thank you, Father God, that you blessed us out of all the 159 counties in Georgia with the best one, Lord God, Clayton County. And we say thank you, Father. We thank you for every square foot of it, Lord God. But Father God, we need you now, Lord God. You say, Father God, if my people who are called by my name would seek my face, would turn from their wicked ways, O Lord God, that you, Father God, would hear from heaven, O Lord, that, Father God, you would forgive us of our sins and you would heal our land. Oh, God, we need a healing today, Lord God. We need you to heal their minds and the souls and everyone, Lord God, that is a part of this wonderful county, Lord God. We ask you, O God, in the name of Jesus, O Lord, for you send your word that when there is unity, O God, that you will command blessings, O God. And we ask you, Father God, in the name of Jesus, that we be unified as one, for there is no difference, O God, between male and female, there is no difference, O God, between Jews and Gentiles, there is no difference, O God, between the old and the young, O God. We're as one, Father God, and we thank you, Father God, for the privilege to be in the land of the living. Now come in the midst of this meeting, O God. Father God, we ask you to touch every single decision, Lord God. Let it be one, Father God, is pleasing in your sight, Lord God. Father God, we thank you that we have the leaders that are humble, Lord God, the leaders that, Father God, are forward thinkers, Lord God, that are serving this community, Father God, for your glory, O God. Father God, we ask you to touch every heart, every mind, every soul, O God, that everything that we do is in alignment with your will, that you would bless us, Lord God, in a mighty way, Lord God, more than we ever received, that this is a new day, O God, a new day for Clayton County, Lord God, where there's no division, O God. In the name of Jesus, we decree and declare unity, O God, that everything that you do, Lord God, and everything that they do, Lord God, will be prosperous, O God. In the name of Jesus, we bless you, Lord God. We honor you, we glorify you, we magnify you, we exalt you, O God, for you're worthy, O God. We thank you in advance for every new administration, Lord God, every single new policy, Lord God, everything that is going to make this county better than ever before, for we're as strong as one, Lord God, and we thank you, we bless you, and we honor you and we glorify you. It's in your Son, Jesus the Christ of Nazareth that we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Good evening and welcome to the June 5, 2018 Regular Business Meeting. The first sort of business is the adoption of the agenda. Before doing so, Mr. Chairman, I would request that item number seven, the presentation for the GEO scholarship, be removed from the agenda.
I'll give that motion, Mr. Chair. Second?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, if I heard you right, Madam Clerk, you wanted to hold item number seven, GEO presentation, and Commissioner Gregory offered that up as a motion, handbrake, second. Are there any questions? This is for the approval of the agenda. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, Ms. Shannon.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Evans.
Regarding Resolution 2018-54, the aviation fuel tax, I'd like to propose the amended version. The version before us does not include an allocation for the cities. The amended version I propose does include an allocation sharing with the cities consistent with the existing lost allocations. Make that into form of a motion.
Second.
Any questions? I have a question. Mr. Hancock?
Yes, sir.
The change, I know that each jurisdiction has to approve basically the same. Is this the same wording for all?
Yes, sir. And I've shared this with all of the attorneys for each of the jurisdictions. They have approved this language and have been provided with a copy of this. And I'm assuming you're going to do that at their next regular meeting.
That who is?
That the cities.
Cities.
Yes, sir.
You got a question?
Are we going to take the question offline? What time did we realize that it was missing? It wasn't presented to all of us.
Several days ago.
It was a matter of realizing that it was missing. We weren't sure whether or not the, we weren't sure whether or not the state was going to do the apportionment within their, and we still didn't have any clarity to that. So the cities contacted me after I drafted the first resolution, provided it to them, which was after it was already on the agenda. They got it. And we'd been talking about it back and forth since then, and they asked that we add that in there, and so we provided a version that had that in there.
Not that it matters, but yeah, I didn't know about that either. But okay, thank you. Those in favor, aye. Oppose, Ms. Shannon.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to hold F, alphabet F, under the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second by Commissioner Evanson. Any questions on this one?
I do. I know we held it last time, and I did receive a phone call, but at any rate, I just want to know, are we going to come to some type of resolution to get this service provided, or are we just going to keep holding it?
Well, I didn't realize that they were going to put it back on, because I was doing some research, and I have not finished my research, and I really want to check on the scoring and all for the companies, because I noticed some discretion in the dates and all that were presented as far as the interviews were concerned. So I have, you know, several questions that some have been answered, but not all.
Okay.
So I really would hope that staff would check, or we talk with each other before putting it back on again.
So do we need to hold it indefinitely, I mean, until we have that conversation?
Until I, yeah.
So it won't keep coming back on the agenda?
Well, once she's satisfied, then she can ask for it to be put back on. That's communication she need to communicate through the COO's office. All right, any other questions?
No, sir.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, Ms. Adams.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Evans.
Item number 13 on the agenda, ordinance 2018-51 regarding our employee retirement system. I ask that we hold that pending some detail adjustments.
Some, okay, there's a motion, there's a second?
Second.
Any questions? You said, my question, Ms. Evanson, is you said there's some detailed questions that you have left to answer, what? The reason for you holding it?
Detailed issues, for example, a definition, I met with, I spoke with our, with the Pension Board Secretary, Ms. Bivins, and their advisor, definition of safety officer, also some of the math around what the interest rate, how the interest rates are calculated. This hadn't yet been proofed since it was passed by the Pension Board.
Is this the second time we brought this up?
Yes, but, Mr. Chairman, we asked to remove it yesterday. It was brought to our Pension Fund Manager and myself, that the definition of safety personnel was vague, it wasn't clear, so we spoke with the Pension Attorney, we made some adjustments to it. And because the, we had already advertised, and the, that document had been made available for the public, and it states that in the advertisement, we wanted to pull it and put the newer revised version out there with the correct definition for safety personnel, so the public would have an opportunity to review it before the board actually has the first read at the next board meeting.
We're going to be ready next board meeting?
Yes, it's already done.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Oppose, Ms. Shannon. Any other amendments, deletions?
Hearing non, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
Okay, is there a motion to adopt as approved? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye.
All right.
Oppose, Ms. Shannon.
Approval of the May 15, 2018 budget hearing minutes.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Evanson, second a motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, Ms. Shannon.
Abstain.
Two abstentions. It's approved.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Warner did arrive, even though it was late, she did arrive, so she was counted as present. So there's no need for an abstention for her.
That's fine. No, I'll go ahead and approve them.
One abstention and four approvals.
Thank you. Next, the board will be presenting a proclamation. Clayton County observes June 2018 as National Safety Month, as presented by Chairman Turner. If we can have Carol Rogers, Central Services, as well as her staff, please come forward as the commissioners join you for the presentation of the proclamation. Whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department Risk Management Division provides solutions and support in the identification and minimization of the county's operations' risks through safety awareness in order to determine what it takes to protect the county's employees, properties, and assets. And whereas, during the month of June, the Clayton County Central Services Department Risk Management Division will follow the National Safety Month theme of keep each other safe in its upcoming activities. And whereas, the month of June has been designated as Safety Month by the National Safety Council and safety and risk management organizations throughout the world engaging efforts during the month to focus on reducing the leading causes of injury and death at work, on the road, and in our homes and communities. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department Risk Management Division will host a June as National Safety Month workshop with all departmental safety coordinators on June 26, 2018. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department Risk Management Division will host a defensive driving class for the Clayton County Youth Services participants on June 12th and 13th, 2018, and conduct the county's defensive driving classes on June 28, 2018. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department Risk Management Division will host a risk management and insurance workshop for the public on June 14, 2018. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department Risk Management Division will host a risk management and insurance workshop for SLBE participants on June 27, 2018. And therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2018 as National Safety Month in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to engage in special efforts during this month to recognize the importance of the role played by the safety and risk management profession in business, industry, and government. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and call the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fifth day of June in the year 2018. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman. of the Keyst outdoor initiatives. May we have staff from Parks and Recreation, Ms. Stephanie Baron, Ahmed Johnson, as well as any other staff members that are present. Let's also have the student recipients to come forward, as well as their family and friends that are present with them. For the ninth consecutive year, Clayton County Parks and Recreation will chaperone Clayton County Middle School students on a three-day trip to a Georgia forest camp. This summer, 12 students will visit Forest and Forest Camp in Hampton, June 8th through the 10th, to experience and study Georgia's natural environment. In 2009, the Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution supporting the Keyst Outdoor Initiative and the Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights. This Bill of Rights recommends that every child by the age of 14 should have an opportunity to experience a list of 10 distinct outdoor activities, such as exploring nature, camping under the stars, following a trail, playing on a team. The seventh and eighth grade students participating in this year's trip, courtesy of a scholarship provided from proceeds of the Lake Spivey Road Race, as well as the Lake Spivey Golf Tournament, were chosen by submitting a 250-word essay describing the outdoor activity they wished to participate in out of the activities named in the Outdoor Bill of Rights. The winners of the 2018 competition are... And before the names are read, I would ask the students, if you would, please just raise your hands once I call your name. Hector Bernal, Morrow Middle School. Erin Bradley, Lovejoy Middle School. Tyler J. Brown, Elite Scholars Academy. Kwan Hodge, Point South Middle School. Lashay Jackson, Hampton Middle School. Roderick Johnson, Elite Scholars Academy. Armeria J. Moses, M.D. Roberts Middle School. Devon Bernard Sargent, Mondays Mill Middle School. Marshante Thornton, Jonesboro Middle School. Sanaya Williams, Mondays Mill Middle School. And the last two would not, could not be present with us this evening. Tanaya Walker, Lovejoy Middle School. And Trayvon Gay, Adamson Middle School. And these are the winners of the 2018 essay competition. And now the board will hear a presentation and update on the office of the District Attorney, as presented by District Attorney Tracy Graham Lawson.
Chairman and Commissioners, this presentation is to correct some misconceptions about my office said by Commissioner Franklin Warner at the May 15, Board of Commissioners meeting. She said that we had received positions and/or other items since the pay study was ordered. However, we have received nothing that was not included in last year's budget. Commissioner Franklin Warner also said, while there was an ongoing discussion about a different department, and I quote, "I want to see a doggone conviction out of Superior Court by the DA's office." Those statements were both untrue. What is the truth about the DA's office? Over the nearly 10 years that I have been DA, we average only 60 jury trials each year. Of those, we get guilty verdicts in two-thirds of the trials. Also, unlike some DA's offices, we do not dismiss cases just because we don't think we can win. Our responsibility is to protect the citizens of Clayton County and also to let victims' voices be heard. The latter is one reason why we do not win all trials, we let 12 citizens decide. Furthermore, the vast majority of the 3,600 individuals felony cases we receive each year are resolved by guilty pleas or completion of our pre-trial intervention and diversion program. If you consider these facts, our conviction rate for all indicted or accused cases is about 95 percent, and nearly all of our convictions are affirmed on appeal. I have personally tried many cases, including Gerald Ben, who shot and wounded a female officer; Lonnie Dawson, who savagely murdered his estranged wife and her boyfriend, she was a victim-witness employee of the solicitor's office; two different men who murdered their babies, Ryan Edwards and Jamal Mathis; Thomas Page, who intentionally ran over Officer Hooks with his truck, severely injuring Officer Hooks; and finally, Lisa Lebus, who was convicted of murdering Officer Sean Callahan, even though she neither pulled the trigger nor was even with her husband when he did. I have never lost a trial as your district attorney. Furthermore, my coworkers, and if you would raise your hand if you work for the DA's office, are very upset by your comment, and many are here other than my chief assistant DA. All of the convictions I'm about to talk about were since you have been in office. First of all, I'd like to introduce Chief Assistant District Attorney Erman Tanwaka, who has been an assistant DA since 1996 and prosecuted for Clayton County for nearly 19 years. He was responsible for the prosecution along with DEA and Hited, and they dismantled a Mexican drug cartel operating out of Clayton County called La Familia in Operation Chokehold, which led to the rest of 45 defendants, seizures of 46 pounds of methamphetamine, a meth lab, 43 kilograms of cocaine, over two tons of marijuana, 20 firearms, and $2,349,000. We were presented with an award from the DEA. He also led the prosecution of Jonathan Bun, who murdered Deputy Rick Daley, and he was convicted and is serving a life sentence without parole. He is the lead prosecutor in our only death penalty case against Artemio Hernandez, a man who killed an elderly woman, and in a separate case kidnapped and raped a teenage girl and then murdered her. He is also the lead prosecutor in the case involving Dr. Nagaretti. Other assistants, and if you'd stand when I name you, Deputy Chief John Fowler, these are all since you have been in office. A conviction of murder for a woman who brutally beat her four-year-old to death with a two-by-four. That murderer was sentenced to life without the possibility of parole, followed by 12 years. Secondly, a life sentence against a defendant who's for dousing a woman head-to-toe in gasoline and setting her on fire. Two weeks ago, he secured a murder conviction against a defendant who murdered her spouse in the driveway of their home, and is facing a mandatory life sentence at an upcoming hearing. Finally, on April 9th of this year, he successfully prosecuted a predator that raped and sodomized a 15-year-old victim. He too was sentenced to a life sentence, followed by 15 years. Deputy Chief Chris Sperry, he's obtained a murder conviction against a defendant this past December who orchestrated the execution of a man and the kidnapping of his father in a robbery. That defendant was sentenced to life without the possibility of parole, followed by 110 years in prison. He also had a murder conviction against a defendant for murdering a man and crippling another inside their own home with a firearm, and then fled to Florida. That defendant was sentenced to life without the possibility of parole, followed by 40 years. He also obtained a 52-count indictment this spring against numerous members of a major national criminal street gang that has so far been responsible for the murder of at least five individuals, including two in Clayton County that were asleep in their beds. Assistant District Attorney Alexis Moore, she was only hired a few months ago, but she's already on May 8th of 2018, successfully convicted a child rapist who was sentenced to 39 years in prison with no possibility of early release. Assistant District Attorney Elizabeth Rosenwasser successfully prosecuted a man who stole millions of dollars from a local company, Flowers Bread Company, and that caused an increase in the cost of bread to our citizens here in Clayton County. I believe he's doing 10 years in prison. She also writes our appeals, some of our appeals, and she's been affirmed on 17 felony convictions, including murderers, rapists, and armed robbers, and including the murder case I had against Lisa Lebus. Senior Assistant District Attorney Charles Seba, in February this year, he convicted two defendants of armed robbery in which they were sentenced to 30 years and 20 years, respectively, without parole. He also convicted a man of using a firearm to take by force the cellphone and wallet of a Clayton County citizen. That sentence was 20 years to serve. Assistant District Attorney Yolanda McKenny, she helped prosecute several of the 20 Luciano Bloods who committed violent crimes in our community. Verdicts include a verdict of guilty for malice murder, felony murder, and aggravated assault and violation of the Gang Act against three members in relationship to the murder of a Clayton County citizen. She has also been successful in forfeiture proceedings against drug traffickers, murderers, and other violent criminals that resulted in hundreds of thousands of dollars for the county and its law enforcement agencies. Assistant District Attorney Kimberly Myers, she has convicted a serial armed robber who committed four armed robberies and a home invasion last March, in which the defendant was sentenced to consecutive life sentences. She also convicted a thief in under 30 minutes who stole... She also convicted a thief in under 30 minutes who stole from a local Clayton County business and was sentenced to 10 years to serve. Senior Assistant District Attorney Rihanna Green prosecuted a murderer who murdered a Clayton County man who was just walking home from work. That defendant is serving a life sentence. She also prosecuted a gang member who shot another gang member in the back at a gas station, leading to a 20-year conviction of voluntary manslaughter. Assistant District Attorney Jill Hartsfield, she convicted a man of beating a 69-year-old man to death with a hammer. That defendant is serving a life sentence. She also convicted a kidnapper who was hiding in Clayton County to avoid his kidnapping probation warrant of false identity. Senior Assistant District Attorney Larissa Oliver, two defendants who committed a kidnapping with bodily injury during a home invasion in which a victim was pistol-whipped and another removed from a shower at gunpoint, she convicted. She also convicted a child rapist who violated two children and was sentenced to 25 years in prison. Assistant District Attorney Rebecca Perez Españo, she prosecuted a defendant who knocked unconscious a woman in front of her children for coughing, causing her permanent vision issues. The defendant was convicted and sentenced to 15 years. Also, she convicted a defendant who burglarized a local business. He too was sent to prison. Finally, Senior Assistant District Attorney Jeff Hawkins, he convicted a serial armed robber of multiple armed robberies in which the defendant was sentenced to 55 years to serve. He also convicted a murderer of malice murder in which the defendant shot and killed a victim who was trying to flee from the defendant in a vehicle. He got life without parole. He also convicted a man of armed robbery this past January in which the defendant forced the victim to strip naked and took the victim's vehicle. That person is serving 20 years in prison. Other accomplishments of our office, we've reduced the pending cases by 30 percent in my first term. We reduced disproportionate minority confinement by 31.4 percent for adults and over 50 percent for juveniles. Our murder conviction rate for jury trials through 2017 was 90 percent. Last year, our employees contacted victims 67,350 times. Our 12-person child support unit collects $8 million each year for children. We have forfeited over $10 million in property for law enforcement agencies in our office, saving taxpayer money by using it to buy cars, guns, ballistic vests, computers, iPads, courtroom technology, and paying for training. We have dissolved four gangs or subsets of gangs operating in Clayton County by convicting all the members. For instance, in the Independence Park case, the Torch Gang, all members are now currently in prison with the lightest sentence being 10 years to serve. If you ask the captain of the precinct where that occurred, he will say that the crime rate has completely disappeared since we accomplished that. I was District Attorney of the Year in Georgia in 2015. My Chief Assistant DA, Mr. Tanwaka, was DA of the Year in Georgia in 2014. Chief Brian Bush was Investigator of the Year in Georgia in 2017, and my former Chief Garland was that in 2016. In 2015, we had the lowest crime rate of the five metro counties. We also have the lowest unindicted inmate population of major cities or counties in Georgia. Based on Sheriff Hill's conservative estimate that it costs $50 per day to house an inmate, when you compare the number of felony inmates in Clayton County Jail on December 31st of 2008, the day before I took office, and on that same day and all the years since, multiply by 365 for the days in a year, we have moved the jail cases so fast, it has saved this county in inmate costs over my predecessor, $15,659,000. If you add in the $10 million we forfeited, we have made or saved Clayton County citizens We also have 3,000 successful graduates of my pre-trial intervention plan. Ms. Hager is my programs director. Those people have no criminal record. They can go to work, they can go to school, they can vote. We have a 9 percent recidivism rate, which compared to regular recidivism rate of people going to prison is 68 percent. They did $300,000 in restitution to their victims, did 300,000 hours of community service, and the nonprofits who have benefited from the program that I choose to have is Stefan's House for Veterans, Walking in Authority Teen Council, the Good Shepherd Clinic, Gigi's House, Meals on Wheels, Kinship Care, Brown Elementary, and you probably saw the Gamble family, who tragically lost their father while he was trying to save his five children and his wife in Forest Park this year, and we have given her thousands of dollars to try to get her back on her feet. I have served the citizens of Clayton County for 33 years, and I have lived here for 35. I believe it is imperative, as elected officials, that we do not personally criticize each other publicly. When the school board did so in 2000... When the school board did so in 2008, our schools lost accreditation. We still have not fully recovered from that stigma, despite enormous strides being made within our school system. Right now, this county is trying to lure major corporations and businesses to come here. I do not think Amazon would be impressed with a visibly dysfunctional board or a member thereof, or a commissioner publicly slandering an excellent DA's office. Disagreements happen, but if I have an issue with another elected official, which is rare, I have the discussion behind closed doors, just the two of us. This instills confidence in our citizens that their elected officials are working together to improve our great county. Based on all of the above, I believe Commissioner Franklin Warner, you owe me and my coworkers an apology.
Are you finished, ma'am? Are you finished?
I am not finished. Finally, and I didn't get an apology.
Well, she's probably gonna respond afterwards.
All right. Finally, in the budget, I am requesting three new investigators' positions plus a part-time support staff person to handle forfeiture cases. The purpose is to form a joint task force with Clayton County PD to combat drug trafficking and human trafficking at Atlanta Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport, who has millions of travelers coming through each year. It is also a major hub for bringing illegal drugs in from other countries, transporting drugs through to other states, and bringing drugs into our state. We have all seen the huge increase in drug-related deaths in Georgia. We have also had an enormous increase in murders in metro Atlanta and here, most of which are rival gangs fighting over the drug trade and/or prostitution trade. Johns, men who sexually abuse children, being human trafficked, and their victims often fly into Atlanta. The average age of the victim is under 14, they are abused on average 10 times per night, and the pimps make about $30,000 a week. That money and the millions in drug proceeds often is brought into Georgia on flights. Our joint task force will combat all of these crimes. My conservative estimate is the task force will seize $3 million in proceeds per year, arrest hundreds of people, and get tons of marijuana, kilos of cocaine, meth, heroin, and millions of narcotics pills off the streets. Please approve these imperative positions. Thank you.
Okay, are there any comments, statements from Ms. Lawson?
Yes, there is. Obviously, she's waiting on me to... The DA, Madam DA, is waiting on me to say something. Let me say this. Since I first... First of all, I commend each and every one of you for all of your hard work. As I told one of your Assistant DAs when I ran into her at a restaurant, I commend you all for the work that you have done. What was brought to us as a board at that time, what the discussion was about, was about policies and procedures in terms of this board and how we approve money for all Clayton County employees to be able to do a great job. That was the purpose of the conversation. And the argument at that particular time, which just as you do in a courtroom as we deal with the business of the people, we are able to do, is about... Was about $8,000, which is on here now, was $12,000. So, and that day, I believe I said to the audience, I apologize that my passion led. Please go back to the notes, I did say that. So, I apologize to you that you took that personally, I really do. But I can tell you this, at the end of the day, I, as well as every other elected official, we are all charged with the safety and the welfare of this entire community. And it's not saying that you're not doing a good job, Madam DA. Madam DA, you are doing a good job. And I always live by good, better, and best. And obviously, as you brought the report today, there's some additional information there, and I commend you on that. But as an elected official, I am going to stick to policies and procedures and making sure that they're consistently put forth, and that was the statement that I made. And again, I did let passion lead. Where that came from is the fact that I had to take a call from several of the folks, that teachers that sat in a classroom when one of them murderers of poor Cherish Williams, who sat in that classroom for 11 days, and nobody spoke to not one of those teachers to tell them that. Nobody. And when that educator saw that the person that we had on trial did not come back with a murder conviction, not saying it was a conviction, I had to see that mother in the pain in her eyes. So, again, I admit and I apologize that day that passion led. Just like you're here, you've been here 30 years, I've been here well over 25 years. The one good thing we can all agree on is we are committed to Clayton County and the betterment of Clayton County. But as an elected official, I will always stick to policies and procedures, and I do apologize to you that you took it personal, but I take it personal when I cannot look in that mother's eyes and tell her that I can't bring that child back, and I can't tell her that we didn't give murder conviction. And that's why I said that day I apologized for my passion leading. And in that sense, though, I will always let passion lead and let facts lead, follow it, and as well, look at the facts. And I'm not gonna go back and forth, so I just wanna make sure you know that, and one of your Assistant DAs was there when I spoke to you personally about it, and I said, "This is not an indictment on you all at all. This is not personal." At the end of the day, we have a community to serve, and every department deserves to have what they need to serve this community in a quality fashion. That's all. That is all.
I just want to clarify that that man that was charged with the murder is serving 20 years in prison on gang charges.
Yes, ma'am, he is.
And Cherish Williams' family was very pleased with our prosecution efforts. That case was very difficult, there was very limited evidence, and as I said before, most DA's offices probably wouldn't have prosecuted it, and we're happy that that gang is dissolved. Thank you.
Yes, Madam DA, thank you.
And the final presentation for this evening, Arts Clayton Update, as presented by Linda Chrissy, the Executive Director of Arts Clayton.
This is my annual trek here. It's always before summer camp, so I just... And I bring you a little information about what's happening. First of all, you have your annual summer camp T-shirt with Aladdin and Night of the Apollo as our themes this year. I have to ask you, excuse me, to let me know if you need a different size or a different color or another shirt. We are celebrating 25 years. What began in 1993 as a Safe Summer Initiative, featuring partnering with our Fire, Police, and Sheriff's Department, has become an annual affair with our Police, Fire, and Sheriff's Office. They are very much a part of what our programming is for the summer camp. We'll have our finale on June 15th, you will receive that, and we'll be at the Performing Arts Center for the first time. In partnership with Clayton County Public Schools, our library system, Head Start, and Kinship Care, we touched the lives of over 15,000 students per month in 31 schools, providing 4,470 hours of art instruction, and employed 21 teaching artists. This was in our past fiscal year. What I have, I have another goodie for you to be delivered to your office tomorrow, but when we had our Japanese exhibit, we had a Japanese workshop, and our children that came participated, and there were extras left, so some came back to make a Japanese lantern for each of you, which lights up, and it will be delivered. We are proud to just show you what an outcome is when our children get together and what they can do. This is just one of the many art projects. In addition to making further inroads, the exhibit... The Japanese exhibit drew over 10,000 visitors in a two-month period to the Arts Clayton Gallery. That is phenomenal. The exhibit continues to grow and strengthen our focus on being a good economic and tourism partner, in addition to making further inroads with the Atlanta Council Corps for future exhibits. A brief update on our beautiful building. We continue to be recognized by the Atlanta Community Foundation for our Going Green Initiative Program, which includes a very large enhanced recycling program. The Grants to Green Initiative is currently considering Arts Clayton for funding to build out our basement to serve as a hub for children's programming. So, if you'll keep your fingers crossed, and there'll be... We hope that will happen, and it will also feed into what the City of Jonesboro plans for the Broad Street Development. All in all, we just want you all to know how much we appreciate your continued support and your vote of confidence in all that we do for our children, families, and the part that we play to make Clayton County a better place.
The board will now consider the consent agenda with the exception of Item F, which has been removed.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those who favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, issue none.
Mr. Chair.
All right, before we go to the next item or the agenda, Commissioner Gregory has asked for appointed privilege, so at this time, I'll turn it over to her. Commissioner.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Maggie Robinson and any family members to come up. If you look at your agenda, Resolution of 201849, it is to memorialize her husband with the naming of the Youth Fishing Derby. As Ms. Robinson comes, Ms. Robinson and her family, they're longtime members of the Ellenwood Community. If you just stand right there in front of Ms. Maggie, she doesn't look like she's 90. 90, right? And I'll just read just a little bit. Clayton County pays tribute to the life and legacy of Mr. Nora Robinson. Mr. Nora Robinson was born September 4th, 1923, to the late Plunk and Bessie Robinson. He was the fifth child of nine, born in Maxi, Georgia. He received his education in Oglethorpe County and relocated to Atlanta in his late teens. He was affectionately known to some as Hayes. Nora loved his family and would do whatever he could to help her friends. He enlisted in the United States Army in March 1943 and served until January 1946 with an honorable discharge. Nora was employed for a short time with the Army Depot in Conley, Georgia, and then with Delta Airlines for 27 years until his retirement. After a long day at work, he often left Delta Airlines and would get on his tractor. He had a passion for gardening and enjoying seeing fruit and vegetables grow. Hayes was also an avid fisherman and an occasional hunter. Upon returning from the service, that's where he met and married his beautiful wife, Mrs. Maggie Minago-Betts. From this union, three children were born, Gary, Vanessa, and Rom. Nora was a member of Kofa Grove Baptist Church in Ellenwood, where he attended with his loving and devoted wife. Unfortunately, Mr. Nora Robinson departed this earth on March 30th, 2018. He will be going to meet his relatives who preceded him, which includes his daughter Vanessa and six siblings. And Mr. Robinson, the way we met, I don't know if COO Stanford remembers, but years ago, he approached me, he called me, he had such a love for fishing, and he wanted other young people, he wanted to teach other young people to fish. Back, I guess this was when we had paper newspapers, and Bill Bedoski did this great article on him and his love for fishing and how he just wanted young people to fish. And everyone who knows him knows that that was his passion. And so, it's just an honor to recognize someone like him. As a saying we say sometime, he was truly a man's man, and he loved children, and he loved fishing. So, it's just an honor that from now on, our Parks and Recs Youth Fishing Tournament is going to be known as the Nora Hayes Robinson Annual Youth Fishing Derby. going to be known as the Nora Hayes Robinson Annual Youth Fishing Derby.
If we could just take a quick minute, just to congratulate board members, I'd love for you two guys to get this Robinson to get on. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. No, don't go. All right, now, that's what you did. He's very young. He's young, too, that's right. Yes, ma'am. County Attorney Jack Hancock.
And before we get to the next item, I see that there's a number of elected officials from some of our city counterparts in the audience tonight. There's a lot of you out there, so I just want to say, appreciate you being here, it's always a pleasure for you to be in the audience, thank you. Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I have two resolutions for your consideration tonight. First is Resolution two thousand eighteen forty-five, and it's a resolution providing for the adoption of the Clayton County Fiscal Year two thousand nineteen budget, to provide for the appropriation of expenditures and accounting of anticipated funding sources to provide for the circumstances under which the budget may be amended by the Board of Commissioners, the Chairman, or the Chairman's designee to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. I would call to your attention two modifications to the original budget resolution. The first one is in the document that was passed out to you tonight, and that is the addition in Section Three of Paragraph Four, which provides that it is to allow for the reapportionment of multi-year project funds previously approved by the Board of Commissioners. Finance Department asks that that be added on Friday morning after the resolution had been submitted to the clerk for publication. The second one occurs, and it does not appear in your, the copy that you have, we've just given this change this evening, but I would ask that you include this modification in your approval of this resolution. It appears in Section Three, Paragraph One, which reads, "To approve transfers or appropriations in any fund among the various accounts within a department," and they have requested that you add the following slash divisions, except those accounts described in Paragraphs One and Two of Section Two above. So the additions are slash divisions after department in Subparagraph One of Section Three, and the addition of Subparagraph Four of Section Three. Mr. Chairman, Finance Director indicates she has an amendment for the budget itself. They want to let her present that at this point in time before the board votes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. On May fifteenth, we had our budget hearing, and we presented a proposed budget at that time. The total budget was two hundred two point six million dollars. Since that time, I've met with each of you, either myself or Mr. COO, or us together have met with each of you or discussed with each of you, and we have some changes to the budget based on those discussions, and I wanted to go through those to put them on the record as an amendment to the proposed budget. The first one is to add three percent cost of living adjustment, the amount would be three hundred, I'm sorry, three million, three hundred thirty thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars. The second item is additional funding to make a merit increase effective for all employees on July one. That amount is one million, one hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred twenty-three dollars. There was a request to eliminate additional funding that was added in the proposed budget for Clayton Cleanup in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars. And we have one, two, three, four different areas that we added positions for departments. The first is for the District Attorney's Office. We're adding three task force investigators. I'm sorry.
Yes, we can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have personnel additions too as well. One is for the District Attorney's Office, we're adding three task force investigators for the Joint Human Trafficking and Drug Task Force. You still can't hear me?
Can you make sure you read each amount as well?
I am, I am. At a cost of two hundred thirty thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars, and part-time legal support for forfeitures of sixteen thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars, for a total two hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred seventy dollars for that department. For the Solicitor's Office, we're adding a Deputy Chief Investigator, ninety-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars, and deleting a Senior Investigator, eighty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-two dollars, for a net increase of twelve thousand, one hundred dollars. For the Tax Commissioner's Office, we're adding a Deputy Tax Commissioner, Property Division, Step Twenty-four, I'm sorry, Grade Twenty-four, Step One, at sixty-eight thousand, eight dollars, and deleting a Deputy Tax Commissioner, Property Division, Grade Twenty-one, Step One, at fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars, for a net increase of eight thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars. The next area is for Parks and Recreation, is to add positions for the Greenway, Greenway, is that correct? Green space, I'm sorry, green space and trail maintenance. So we're requesting to add three park maintenance workers at one hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars, add a park maintenance worker senior at forty-one thousand, three hundred ten dollars, a green space coordinator at fifty-two thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars, deleting a constituent special services manager at fifty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars, deleting a recreation manager at fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, deleting a green space ranger senior at forty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars, and an administrative secretary deleting at forty-six thousand, five seventy-four, for a net increase of two thousand, eight dollars. Total increase in expenditures would be four million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred eleven dollars. We're adding additional revenue through additional, through growth in the property tax digest. We received a preliminary digest on May fifteenth that had an increase in it, so we would fund part of these increases with that, as well as, instead of reducing the millage rate by one mil, we would have to reduce it by half a mil to generate the additional revenue to cover all of these expenditure, the increase in expenses. So the proposed amended budget would be two hundred seven million, one hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars for the general fund. You also have in front of you, because of the cola and the merit increase for other funds that have personnel in it, you have that information there as well. And the total budget, as we require, statute requires that we approve a total budget, when we approve the budget, let me get to this page. So we would approve a total budget of three hundred thirty-seven million, four hundred five thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars, that's the two hundred seven million, one hundred eighty-three thousand, three fifty-five for the general fund, thirty-six million, two hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars for special revenue funds, fifty-one thousand, fifty-one million, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars for capital project funds, fifteen million, three hundred fifty-three dollars, three hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars for the debt service fund, twenty-three million, seven hundred seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars for the internal service funds, and three million, six hundred nine thousand, ten dollars for the enterprise funds. Again, that total would be three hundred thirty-seven million, four hundred five thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars for all funds, and this budget would be supported by, we would decrease the gross millage rate from twenty-one point nine two four to twenty-one point three three six, which would be a five, point five eight eight reduction to the gross millage. After applying the sales tax credit of five point two four oh mils, you would arrive at a net millage rate of sixteen point oh nine six, which is a half a mil reduction from the previous year's millage rate. And that is all I have.
Okay, so as a point of clarification, you want to, the amendments you just read through is what you want added to the budget?
Yes, so these are items that are added to the proposed budget that was presented on May fifteenth.
Right.
These are the changes.
So if I heard you correctly, the three percent cola is what you're proposing, as well as the merit increase.
That is correct.
And the merit increase would start when, throughout the year?
July one, for all employees. It would be effective July one, instead of on the anniversary date.
Okay, and what was the justification or logic of eliminating the Clayton Cleanup Funds?
We were, as I stated earlier, I met with each Commissioner, and they had specific requests, and this is a request that was asked. We currently have a hundred thousand dollars that's been in the, this would be the third year for fiscal year nineteen. That fund is in there for cleanup initiative, and there was a request to add a hundred fifty thousand back when we did the initial budget proposal. I believe that the Solid Waste Authority had approved something.
Yeah, so just for clarification on that, a hundred thousand was for beautification efforts on the planters, and basically that money has been used for the planters on Spivey, Spivey.
We have a contract with CGL, and it's on the highway one thirty-eight from Walt Stevens to Henry County, and also on Pinola Road.
Okay, but what about Mount Zion Parkway and Mount Zion Road? Those planters look awful, they're not getting anything done, but at the same time, the hundred and fifty thousand was allocated or earmarked for a Keep Clayton Beautiful Initiative. That initiative is something that we, as the Solid Waste Authority Board, propose to do something about littering and illegal dumping in this county. Commissioner Hamburg, is this yours to take out?
Yes.
Why would you want to take that out when we have such a problem with litter and ugly sites throughout the county when it comes to trash?
As I was told, that one hundred and fifty thousand was for a position.
A position, a director's position and administrative position, and those positions are needed.
That's not cleaning the county. The hundred thousand would be to help clean the county and divide the money up.
Okay, well, that hundred and fifty is for that initiative to start so they can do it countywide. Just a hundred thousand dollars thrown in a pot and saying, "Go out to Alva Block Road and Lake Spivey and clean up those planters," isn't sufficient enough.
I think that's better than spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a position.
We fund positions that do delivery service throughout the county.
We want paper and trash picked up.
Can I ask, Chairman? And this goes back to what we were discussing earlier. I have said the same thing over and over again. Please know this is not personal for me, but it is because I live here, but at the end of the day, all of this that's being proposed, all of it is kind of ambiguous. The process for me didn't make any sense. When I sat down with CFO and the COO, it was presented, "Well, this is what we're looking to do." Then next thing I know, I see this, we got changes, well, where's the changes? There's just no clear process. The information is not clear to even me as a Commissioner, I know it's not clear to the public, and I even consulted with those in the public that I do know they're much smarter than me. And one of the things they all said was, "We need to be clear on what we're spending and how we're spending it." And even just this conversation about eliminate Clayton Cleanup Funds, we don't have it on paper exactly what it is being used for, other than, like you just mentioned, we're going to have somebody do it. Who is the somebody that's going to do it? Who did it before? What happened to CGL before if we gave them the money? Because I do admit, it looks horrible. Lake Spivey looks horrible. Pinola, I have been over there, but in front of Marl looks horrible. So how much is in there? Was it being used? How was it being used? I know we had a contract, but did it run out? Did they stop getting used? And see, that's the struggle I have, and unfortunately, it turns into a personal thing with some, but at the end of the day, we've got to come up with a clear-cut means of doing something based upon clear and fair and consistent policies and procedures. I wouldn't want to be in y'all's shoes bouncing back and forth. I'm in this role as an elected official. I don't know how you do it. I really don't. All I want is us to be clear, consistent, have policies and procedures in place, and I don't see why we got amended budget with it being taken out if it wasn't brought before the board to be taken out. It makes no sense to me. So I say put it back in, too, as well as the other things. And then even on Park, we haven't got the Parks and Rec, but Chair, we reorganized Parks and Rec not too long ago, and we're reorganizing it again. I'm a little baffled.
Okay, so I'm clear where we at.
You have your.
Commissioner Edson.
Parliamentary question, for the sake of everybody, including myself. We, there was, there's a, the process, are we going to amend the proposed amendment to the proposed agenda? Do we need to make a motion to amend the agenda and then a motion to amend the amendment? Help me out, please.
Well, I would think we would have to take a motion to amend the, to make, to add these amendments into the proposed budget.
Well, see, the problem I have with that, what was presented, I'm sorry, I apologize. I apologize.
Since the original budget was published.
That's my point.
That's why we need to take a vote on the amendment.
Correct.
Vote on the proposed amendments and then vote on the amended.
Wait, say that again. So we need to vote on the proposed amendments as she read them, and then amend the amendments?
You would vote on the acceptance of the amendments that she proposed, and then you would vote on the entire budget as amended.
What if we want to amend the amendments?
You can do that.
So back to my original question, do we need to have a motion, a seconded and discussion for approval of the amendments?
You can do.
And then we amend?
Excuse me.
Okay, go ahead.
No, you please, no, go ahead. I shouldn't have interrupted you, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm just trying to understand the fact.
Okay, so listen, listen.
Mr. Chairman, please, let our parliamentary answer the question.
Go ahead.
You can do it one at a time, or you can do them as a whole, whichever one you choose to do. So if you want to get a motion and a second to amend, to approve the amendments as a whole, someone could then make a motion to amend that by adding or deleting something else.
Okay, so unless you tell me this is not proper procedure, what I plan on doing is taking a first and a second, and then we can discuss the amendment changes, and then vote on the amended proposal.
That is absolutely true.
And then take a overall.
Absolutely proper. And now, and I think the second question is, if somebody wants to add or delete from the proposed amendments, then it would take a second motion to do that. So, you know, you can amend the amendment if you choose to do that.
Okay.
Can we do it in one of them?
No, it's got to at least be two, possibly three. Okay, so with that being said, you had another question, Mr. Edson, before I ask for a motion on what was presented by the CFO.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, Mr. Chairman, the County Attorney provided some amendments as well, am I correct?
Yeah, those were.
Are those already in there?
Got to amend the amendment?
Yeah. Yeah, let's include those as well. So those two items plus what the CFO has added would be the amendment to the resolution as originally published.
Okay, so in the spirit of moving it forward, I'll make a motion to approve the budget as amended, as originally amended.
No, as proposed.
As proposed. Am I saying that right?
No, I understand.
Could I ask you to say you make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand eighteen forty-five as amended, or, and then you go from there?
Okay, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen forty-five as amended.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bivens, the, I'm concerned about the three percent cola. How much does a three percent cost of living adjustment equate to in terms of millage rates for property taxpayers?
That would be equivalent to a half a mil.
A half a mil?
Yes.
And so the amended proposed budget, well, the original proposed budget included an entire millage rate decrease for the taxpaying property owners.
That is correct.
But the amended takes half of that tax rate decrease away?
That is correct, so instead of a full mil, it would be only a half a mil rollback.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I am, I'm concerned, I think our employees deserve everything that they get in terms of increases, but I also think some relief is deserved of our property taxpayers in Clayton County. Yeah, let's include those as well. So those two items, plus what the CFO has added, would be the amendment to the resolution as originally published.
Okay, so in the spirit of moving it forward, I'll make a motion to approve the budget as amended, as originally amended.
No, as proposed.
As proposed. Am I saying that right?
Could I ask you to say you make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand eighteen forty-five as amended, or, oh, and then you go from there?
Okay, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen forty-five as amended.
Is there a second?
A second?
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Ms., Ms. Bivens, the, I'm concerned about the three percent COLA. How much does a three percent cost of living adjustment equate to in terms of millage rates for property taxpayers?
That would be equivalent to a half a mil.
A half a mil?
Yes.
And so the, uh, the amended proposed budget, well, the, the original proposed budget included an entire millage rate decrease for the taxpaying property owners.
That is correct.
But the amended takes half of that tax rate decrease away?
That is correct. So instead of a full mil, it would be only a half a mil rollback.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I am, I'm concerned, I, I think our, our employees deserve everything that they get in terms of increases, but I also think some relief is deserved of our property taxpayers in Clayton County. This three percent COLA that you've proposed is on top of a three point seven five merit increase? I'm concerned about our taxpayers and a balance for both our taxpayers and our, our employees.
And I share that same concern, and glad you brought that up as a point, and I'm even more so glad that you said that our employees deserve a pay raise, a COLA. Uh, when you look at the half percentage, we are doing something for the citizens by rolling back at least a half percent. But at the same time, we are looking at taking care of our most greatest valuable assets, which are our employees, and making sure that, and you talk about this merit increase, which is great. Haven't had one in, what, ten years or so? But at the same time, that, well, how long has it been?
Fourteen?
Fourteen years? It hasn't been that long, but it's fourteen years. Okay, neither here nor there, it's been a while. Uh, but that can range from zero to three point seven five. Uh, where's Ms. Ambrose at? Come to the podium, please. And I just got two questions for you, uh, if you know off the top of your head, what was the insurance premium increase for our employees last year?
It was three percent.
And this year is probably gonna go up to what?
This year, Chairman, it is, um, let me, let me grab some notes because I want to throw out some figures if that's okay.
If, if you have it. I don't want to prolong the hour, but if you have it. And what I'm, my point here is, cost of living is going up all over the place, and I truly, truly value our, our employees as well as our citizens. And I think that by at least rolling back for a half percent now, and then going to a merit increase and a COLA for our employees addresses everybody.
I apologize, um, last year was the year that we had a, an increase as well as a contribution change. So the, uh, based on my information, the, uh, increase was quite significant last year compared to what it is this year. This year, it is only three percent. We've had a very minimum change in the, um, in the contribution for the, for the employees. Uh, for example, an employee-only premium was three hu, was two hundred and thirty-five dollars last year compared to only two hundred and forty dollars this year. A family paying six hundred and forty-nine dollars last year is only paying six hundred and sixty-six dollars this year. So we, the, the premiums have definitely, we, we are experiencing, um, a decrease. But last year, it was significant because not only did we have a, an increase, we did change the contribution structure as well.
Can you please, sorry, Mr. Chair, can you please give us that exact figure? Because I remember that was a point of conversation last year, because we passed along an increase in the portion, this board passed along the increase in the portion of which the employees paid, plus an increase of the, the benefit cost itself, which I know is unheard of, but we did that.
We, we did, and the increase was around, uh, forty percent. So it was quite significant, the increase, as I said, we changed the contribution structure as well as there was an increase, um, a three percent increase at that time as well.
I believe if I did go back to my notes and my emails, I think that total increase, um, on some plans was as high as six to eight percent. Because I met with Kaiser personally, and I did some figuring, I, I did some figures along with ACCG. It was like six percent, was it five point nine or six percent, somewhere in there, was the total increase to the employees.
Right, right now, what I have, Commissioner Warner, is around thirty-nine to forty percent. Uh, you can, there's the possibility that it could have been a little higher, but based on the preliminary numbers that I have in front of me, it's around thirty-nine, forty percent.
That's the contribution or the increase? Remember, contribution is different than the increase itself. It's two different things. The first one is the increase that we all absorb, which is like, in other words, our portion that we, that you pay as an employee, plus the county pays, it increases by a percentage. So we got an increase there. What was the increase? That's that three percent you was talking about. I, I have to pull it up. Because that's what the employees are absor, absorbing holistically, even in this budget, is that increase. So we, we've got to know that number as well.
In two, in two thousand seventeen, and I'm, I'm speaking from a contribution perspective. In two thousand seventeen, for an employee premium, uh, contribution, excuse me, contribution, because I'm looking at, what I have is based on employee contribution. And what I'm looking at here, for an employee only, it was right at thirty-nine point eighty-five percent that the employee absorbed, uh, compared to, uh, ten point twenty percent that the county absorbed at that time. And that is based on the fact that we changed the contribution structure.
We changed it to seventy thirty?
Seventy thirty.
So it's no question, the Affordable Care Act has caused insurance premiums to go through the roof these last several years. It's unfortunate for everybody, not just with the county. But what are the minimum employer obligations under the Affordable Care Act? Is it fifty percent employer-paid health insurance premiums? And we're paying seventy percent, is that right?
We, we are.
When they change the contribution?
We're paying seventy percent compared to the employees', uh, thirty percent.
Okay. So your point, Mr. Chairman, is that you advocate for the COLA this year to offset the Affordable Care Act premium increases the employees are paying?
No, sir. My point of contention here is our employees deserve a pay raise at three percent COLA as well as a merit increase because, number one, they're behind, our, there's no doubt in my mind that compensate, compensation study is going to reveal exactly how, how behind we are with paying our true value of what our, our employees are, are worth.
Okay.
Hold on, I'm not finished. And they're, they're already behind from, from last year in terms of, uh, the insurance, the, the benefits increase. So why not give our employees what they're worth, give them that three percent, and then reinstate the merit increase? And I wouldn't even have a problem with doing the merit increase on, um, anniversary, on their anniversary date like it used to be, where they can be truly evaluated for a year's time. If we start back, if we do everybody January one, not only will a number of new employees not receive anything, because they have not been with the county for a year, but not only that, but the, the, uh, the employees will be set to receive anywhere from zero to three point seven five percent. Now.
Six.
Three point six two five.
Three what?
Six.
Up to three point six two five.
Whatever it is, it's still between zero and three percent.
No, it's not, Mr. Chairman. The merit increases go up to five steps per employee.
Okay, can I finish, sir? I did not cut you off. Can I finish my statement?
Please do.
All right, uh, Madam CFO, when you do the evaluation, what is the percentages an employee can receive?
They go from zero, they go from zero to six point two five.
Okay, and, and that's great, but that's number zero, then one point two five, and so forth and so on?
Yes, it goes from zero, one point two five.
So that was my point, the percentage from zero, zero to whatever else. So, Mr. Edson, you can speak.
Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I, I just want to say this. While I too would like to give the employees an increase, my preference would be the merit increase, not only because it will save the taxpayers money with the millage, with one mil, instead of the point five. And we're talking about getting businesses here, and if we have a millage rate, that one millage rate of, of, uh, one mil would be more inviting, I think, for businesses, and not only for businesses, but for our taxpayers, our property taxpayers, than the point five. Now, as far as the increases would go, I would prefer the merit increases, which would start July one, which would be anywhere from, what, up to, what, six point five according what the ratings are?
Six point two five is the highest, yes.
Right. And that way, we can save, well, we can still have that one mil savings instead of the point five.
I agree.
And because we don't know where we'll be when the compensation study is finished. A lot of people are going to get increases anyway.
Not necessarily, not if the money's not.
Ms. Bivens, how much money?
Right, if the money's not there.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, Mr. Edson.
How much money is allocated towards the comp plan in the proposed budget?
Right now, the proposed budget with the increase in the additional revenue, um, based on the preliminary digest, we have about four hundred thousand dollars that's set aside.
So we've got a three point seven five percent, which is four point one million dollars for employee pay raises on a merit basis, up to six and a quarter percent, which is five steps from where they currently are, effective next month.
July one, yes.
And four hundred thousand more to address the priorities of the comp plan results. When would that be? July, August again?
The comp study results will be back, the end of this month?
June thirty, so we could implement those, but then next?
Sometime in the first two or three months of the next fiscal year.
Okay, so right around the summer, so that also. Mr. Chairman, I think the taxpayers deserve some relief on top of that. I think that's a big enough step for our employees. They do deserve a lot. But I think our property taxpayers deserve just as much, and I support the one mil decrease. And I'm gonna make that in the form of a motion.
Commissioner Warner, I didn't ask for a motion yet.
I just want to say this. I had, I, I understand the merit increase. But I do believe that based upon the fact, as I stated before, that, and I'm all about equity among all of our employees, as well as citizens. But when it comes to these employees who serve the citizens, we have passed on so much to them. And it's so difficult to feel already some of these police positions because of what they're getting paid and because of the benefits. And, uh, even though, and I want to say this, I don't think anybody up here can sit here and talk about the Affordable Care Act causing the issues to go up. I don't think that's fair. Uh, we're not going to get into a political conversation. But as a professional in the insurance industry, I can tell you that what we did to our employees last year in terms of the benefits was a disservice. And again, based upon what's going on throughout the state, and that's why we keep losing police officers and those that are serving constantly between, and actually between, I have looked at all of our departments, including solicitor generals, DAs, all of them. A lot of people have said that they left this county because they simply could not afford to raise their families on what they were getting paid, and because of the increases. And even though you did that study, I hear what you're saying. But another thing too that I have with the merit increase is I have a concern with the, uh, the current climate of Clayton County. Clayton County is a great county, but what happens is, when you pull people from civil service protection as, uh, directors, it trickles down to the supervisors. And if that increase in terms of their pay is going to be determined based upon their supervisor, then right now I have concern with supporting that. I want the, I want our employees to be able to get a merit increase plus a COLA, or just a COLA. But you're saying we're gonna do from zero to six point two five, they might get zero. So then, the employees are still left hanging out, trying to figure out how they're gonna feed their families and take care of their families, and whether or not they can afford health insurance. As an elected official, I pay the highest, I could tell you one of the highest employee benefits costs in this state. And we are twenty-five hundred li, twenty-five hundred life group. We should have better costs, so that's affecting this budget. That's why I support the three percent COLA.
Uh, is the police chief here? Uh, a statement was made that we don't, uh, we aren't getting police officers because of the pay. Will you please come and speak to that? And let us know what's going on with that, and it's not the pay?
Madam, madam.
I just want, no, I just want a correction.
If I could make say this too, a correction.
Come on, Chief, but why, hold on a second.
Just a correction.
Let, let me just get one question out right quick, just to be my last question. Madam CFO, what happens, what happens if, uh, to an employee that's only been here a couple of months, when evaluation comes July one? Or even six months?
So already, if, um, according to civil service guidelines, and Ms. Ambrose can correct me if I'm wrong, a non-provocationary employee will not be eligible for merit because they're on probation.
So Pam, what I want you to do for me, not tonight, but tomorrow, find out how many employees would not be eligible for that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I said that wrong. A probationary employee would not be eligible. I meant to say the non-provocationary employee would be eligible.
Absolutely. So I need to know how many of our employees are going to be impacted by receiving zero as far as a merit increase. Okay, uh.
Ms. Hamburg, Ms. Hamburg didn't get to ask the question?
Uh, right.
No, that's, he's coming to the podium. Chief.
Yeah, a, a statement was made that we aren't getting police because of the pay.
Well, let her clarify.
Let her clarify first.
Let me clarify this. Because Chief, in all fairness, you're gonna speak as the chief because you're not service protective. So you're gonna give us what we want to hear at the end of the day. Let me say that. So at the end of the day, we're gonna get, and I'll do the same. I'm gonna give you the answer. I need to have to keep my job. But nobody's gonna speak on behalf of all employees. And so even when we do a study and everybody knows their supervisor's looking, you're gonna make sure you say what you need to say at that particular time. So that's all I'm saying, and the seasoned, seasoned people leave, and it's not just police, just as an example, because Lord knows, I better not give another example on this board. I'd be thrown under the bus.
Okay, Chief, you guys think?
Good afternoon, good evening, Board. Commissioner, thank you for reminding me about my protection. I'm going back to my seat now.
You ain't, I'm just telling you, brother.
But I understand that, this is a serious matter. Pay is always a concern nationally in law enforcement. But as we have transition in the police department, we have different aspects that contribute to departures. When we talk about our departmental pay, we can't compete with federal jobs. Now, our salaries are competitive with local municipalities. I just had my captain over recruiting research that today for this very reason. Our pay is competitive, but law enforcement pay nationally is, we can't compete with federal agencies. And that's who we lose our best employees to, federal hires that go to the FBI, Homeland Security, ATF. So pay is an issue, no doubt about it. But there are other aspects of the employment that also contribute to those separations.
Thank you, Chief, because you just told us that when compensation study come back, y'all should be good.
That's not what I said.
He said at the end, pay is an issue.
Let, let me clarify a little bit more. I'm glad you brought it up, Chairman, because I said our local pay is competitive with our peers, but all of those municipalities are having problems because their pay is not competitive with the federal industry, and it's not enough for what they do. So I can tell you, yes, we're competitive in the metropolitan area, but the reason all the municipalities are having problems is because the job isn't paying them.
Yeah, but you're not a municipality, and you're on our pay schedule.
Municipalities, counties, jurisdictions, period, in metropolitan area.
Thank you, Chief. I just have, want to have one closing thing on that, Chairman, and I just want to drive this home, and I've said this over and over again. I leave this job here, and I go throughout the state of Georgia, and let me tell you, when it comes to our employee benefits, I've spoken to the employees and those that used to be years ago clients. And then, and I know of employees that have had to decide to put their children on Peach Care and other things, or to go someplace that has better benefits. To be honest with you, I would have had to think about, to have thought about it, because we do have the highest cost and benefits, which we're not gonna fix overnight, and one of the highest, and it's not just due to the Affordable Care Act. So that's why I'm supporting, as I stated before, the three percent, because it goes across the board to help lighten the load, because they've carried, the employees have carried a heavier load. That was the purpose of the statement. So I apologize for just singling y'all out. It was an example.
Okay. Back to my original question.
Thank you, Chief.
So Ms. Bivens, I also have a, a follow-up, two questions. The, uh, the comp, the comp and compensation plan study, compensation study, that includes part-time employees as well, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct, Commissioner. It includes, um, part-time employees.
And it will, and it's also, it also includes those employees of the constitutional offices, like the DA and the tax commissioner and the, and the courts?
Yes, sir.
Do the merit increases that average three point seven five, those also encompass the offices like the DA and the courts and the tax commissioner?
Yes, it's all full-time employees.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend the amended proposed budget to strike the three percent COLA?
Is there a second?
Second?
Any other discussion? I think we're doing our, employees a disservice, but...
I think the taxpayers deserve a cut too.
And everybody has a right to their opinion and statement.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so first in a second, there's not any other statements, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
It's three, two, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended proposed budget.
The amended amended proposed budget, because we just amended it again.
The AQ, AA two?
The, the amended budget.
The amended budget? To adopt the amended budget, am I saying that right?
With the, without?
No, we've already approved the amended budget, so it's the overall budget at this time.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, okay.
Go ahead. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, go ahead, Madam.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, so with that amendment, I just want to, um, give the revised numbers because the totals will change.
Do you have that?
I do have, yes, sir, I do.
That's right, yeah.
And I, I did provide a copy with, to you as well.
Okay, go ahead.
So with that, removing that, the total budget, um, for the general operating fund, it would be an additional one million, two hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. The, um, amended budget that we're asking that, well, that to approve would be two hundred three million, eight hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars for the general fund. And for all funds, um, special revenue fund would be thirty-five million, six hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars. Capital project funds would be fifty-one million, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars. Debt service fund would be fifteen million, three hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars. Internal service funds, twenty-three million, seven hundred seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars. And the enterprise funds would be three million, five hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars. For a total, all funds would be three hundred thirty-three million, four hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars. This would result in a one-mill decrease to the net millage rate. So the proposal would be a fifteen point five nine six, but this year, last year was sixteen point five nine six.
If we voted unanimously on this, it would sure show a, some strength in this board.
Don't think it happened. Don't think that'll happen.
I mean, we're reducing taxes, raising pay.
We're going back down to the fifties. I tell you what to do when you do it.
We got a first and a second on that. Is there anything, any other statements, comments, questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Three, two, it passes.
Thank you.
Let's go next.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, resolution two thousand eighteen fifty-four is a resolution author- authorizing Clayton County to accept grant or other funds from the state of Georgia to compensate the county and qualified Clayton County municipalities for the loss of revenue due to the suspension by the governor, the collection of joint local option sales tax on aviation fuel at Harsfield, Jackson, Atlanta, and the National Airport, or legislative action by the General Assembly resulting in the loss of this revenue. And further to evidence the county's intent not to challenge the governor's authority to impose such a suspension and further not to appeal the decision of the Eleventh Circuit Court of Appeals in the case of Clayton County, Georgia, Ed Allen versus FAA, file number seventeen dash one oh two one oh, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement, authorize the chief of natural officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense relating thereto to provide an effective date to this resolution and for other purposes. In addition, you accepted, uh, the resolution that is before you, which contains a distribution, a provision in section two that if the funds, we don't know how they're gonna come, but if they are paid in their entirety to the county, then the county would distribute those funds pursuant to the current, the existing loss distribution among the county and the cities.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, Mr. Hancock. I thought the distribution was gonna come from the Department of Revenue.
We don't know that, Mr. Chairman, and, and that's why I think the agreement was to go ahead and put this in there. If it comes from the Department of Revenue, then it'll be distributed already. Uh, it's gonna, the, the money is gonna come through the Department of Revenue from the Department of Community Affairs, I believe, in the form of a grant, is what the, the state has indicated to us. Uh, but we don't know whether they're gonna divide it up or not. And so the, the cities ask, uh, that, that you agree in advance. If they don't do that, that we would adhere to the, uh, existing loss distribution for that division. And the, the, the number in the resolution is twenty-seven million dollars, which is the number that's been thrown around, but I believe I saw in the paper yesterday that it's actually twenty-six point eight million or thereabouts is the amount that, uh, that will, will actually come to Clayton County. But whatever number that is, that's how we would distribute.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, do need executive session for personnel and litigation, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the last five items are board appointments.
All right, first appointment, hold on a second. You have something other than this?
No, specifically to the board appointments.
Okay, all right, we'll get into it. You got appointment?
Well, no, it's not that. It's the library board. There was a rescheduling of that very significant public hearing until next week. There's some, I think that there's worth considering holding these appointments until after that so there's been some, some cohesion or, or...
Some of these people aren't even there anymore.
I talked to two of them today.
Which two?
Brenda Rayburn and Sherry Hamilton. And both of them said that they agree that it was very important that you maintain, uh, the existing board structure and that you don't throw some new appointee into that kinda thing that we're doing next week, a public hearing on what it's about. And they both agreed to continue to serve until after that.
Well, Mr., Mr. Chairman, I think that just like we, uh, moved forward with the development authority and did some things at that time, we need to move forward with this board appointment because I do have someone that has significant, um, background in that arena. She used to be the director of an entire library system who lives here in Georgia. And it's good always to have fresh eyes when you're dealing with anything that, uh, can go along with those that are already on a board. So I, I just wanna say that I would like for you to take that into consideration when we take our vote and move forward with the votes to this board.
Yeah, and I can see Mr. Emerson's point to a certain extent, but also having somebody, there's not that much, well, there is involvement with the, uh, personnel that we are, uh, speaking of with the board, but a set, a new, fresh set of eyes and ears will allow for a, probably more fair and unbiased, uh,
Unbiased perspective.
No, the, uh, hearing.
Oh, yes.
So, uh, we're gonna move on, we'll move forward with...
I'll make a motion that we hold library board appointments until the next board meeting.
Second.
Can y'all wait till I ask the question?
Call the question.
See, let me see, the center, I think this thing right here say the chairman right here.
I know, that's the truth.
How about, how about let me do the calling, all right? All right, so Mr. Emerson wants to make an, uh, motion to pull the library appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? I don't agree with this. I think we should just move forward, but, uh, any other questions or statements? Here and none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
It's three, two, it, it passes. We'll go to the next appointment, which is the appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Jim Buckman, who resigned. The term expires on December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Uh, Vice Chairman Michael Emerson's appointment. Do you have a recommendation?
I do. Mr. Gold Medalist himself, I recommend Mr. Steve Lundquist.
Is there a second?
I second that one.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Last appointment is, uh, appointment to Solid Waste Management Authority to fill the unexpired term of Andrew Love for non-attendance. The term expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. It's a full board appointment. Are there any recommendations?
Which one?
Solid Waste Authority Board. I'm gonna ask that we hold that till next?
Yeah.
All right. Madam, that concludes the, uh, appointments. Unless there's any other business before this board, I will ask for a motion to go into executive session to talk about litigation and property. Personnel, litigation of personnel. Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. About to have a good evening. All right, uh, motion to recommend.
So moved.
A second, those in favor, aye? Oppose? It's unanimous, Mr. Reed.
I have two settlements. Um, one is with, uh, it's a workers' comp settlement with Phyllis Gant in the amount of twenty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, the stipulation from the workers' comp board has, is also, um, at here and I believe approved by the board. And then I have another workers' comp settlement with Miyosha Biggs in the amount of four thousand dollars. Uh, the stipulation's also been approved by the board and also requesting authorization for finance to adjust the budget to reflect, um, those appropriate expenses.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on that either item? Here and, uh, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Uh, you got something else?
That's it, thank you.
All right, a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Those in favor, aye? Oppose? It's unanimous.